Okay, I'm calling the meeting to order at one o'clock. First on the agenda is a public input. We have any public input? Okay, I think the next thing is we should read these things right on the next.
Correspondence?
Correspondence with three bells first.
Yes, please.
Okay, the first one is executive session. This is something that we read at every meeting. When entering an executive session, it is a best practice to designate a place and instruct the public where to wait for the meeting to resume. Location should be far enough from the meeting room to ensure privacy for the executive session, but within eyesight of the door to the meeting. On coming out of executive session, opening the door is sufficient notification for the public to re-enter the meeting room. You are not obligated to find members of the public who may have left the designated area. If a location is designated for the public to gather that is not within sight of the meeting room, you should notify members of the public in the waiting area once the executive session has ended. Following this best practice will help you protect sensitive information while ensuring maximum transparency for the public. Okay, now this next one. And how you doing?
Well, these are separate things. So this is. So this way, we had. All the boards were instructed to read.
Yeah.
Right after meeting. This is an update on pensions stuff.
So this is, yeah, this is our correspondence. This is something I was gonna ask about to introduce him later.
Okay, that was okay.
Right.
Um, well. The next area on the thing is consideration of regular meeting minutes from April nineteenth. Why don't we get that done? Then I'll, I'll go into this next area. Okay, has everyone got a minute from the last meeting? If they have and everyone looked at it, I'm asking for a motion to approve it as presented.
Make a motion to approve.
Uh, do I have a second?
You have to second it.
I second it? Okay, I second it. Minutes are approved as presented.
Uh, you gotta vote.
Oh. We don't have the meetings often enough.
Yeah.
Um, I asked for a vote of the approval of the meeting. I'll say hi.
Alright, and you have stayed.
Any favor?
Yep.
Uh, any objection?
No.
Okay, approved as presented. Next, uh, agenda will be Dan?
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. What I'm, I'm gonna ask the commission to do is if they would add a agenda item to consider a board of selectmen resolution. That is the resolution I've sent out to you guys. Um, if you put it on for consideration, then I can talk about it more in detail. If that's okay. So you would have to make a motion to put it on the agenda. Vote on yes, we put on the agenda for consideration that I can.
Okay, then I make a motion that we put on the agenda this proposal from Dan Carter. Um, do I have?
Need a second?
Do I have a second on it?
I said.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Alright.
Aye, any opposed? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what we have here is we have a resolution for the board, from the Board of Selectmen. Um, with our latest highway contract, we, I guess the HR had noticed something that we had had in there thirty-five years of, I guess thirty-five years of tenure versus thirty-seven years of credited service with how they define who's contributing to the plan.
Yeah.
So in this situation, this would affect Bobby Dibble. And what is happening is if he's reached thirty-seven years of credited service, what he's doing right now is he's still adding to the pension plan. He can't get anything out. So technically, he's losing six percent of his income. He's right now the only one affected. Um, there could be more down the line, but obviously, the way we treat employees is pretty important. We align with whatever else is going to.
Right, yeah, so the, when the town pension plan went to contributory in two thousand and one, the MOU said that you, it was thirty-five years of contributions. The unions always believed those thirty-five years of service. So some people were stopped under prior benefit coordinators when, um, some people continued. So when Phyllis took over benefits, she said no. It says from two thousand and one, it's thirty-five years of contributions to the pension. So we had that out, then in this last contract that DPW signed, DPW changed it to thirty-seven years of service it stops on. It was negotiated. Um, they bought it by, as part of the contract negotiations. So, but Dan was saying, now there's this group, this union group that stops at thirty-seven years of service. The non-union aren't in the contract. So the proposal then is to clean up that the non-union person that is above thirty-seven years in service, if they didn't do anything, he would just continue contributing until he hit thirty-five years of contributions. So I think the proposal is to stop him at thirty-seven or since he's passed it today, whenever. Um, and what we did with the union that did it, there was no payback. Because it's a thirty-five years of contributions, we don't owe money back. Like Bob Dibble's at forty years of service. Wouldn't be paid back for the three years. It would just then cease instead of waiting till twenty thirty-six.
Yeah, I've got a question. So in his case, he's been paying at six percent, two years of his own money in there.
Yeah.
But it's not gonna really count adding to his pension.
So he's still, but right now he's maxed out. So thirty-five years maxes out the percentage you can get. Obviously, every year you work, if you're gonna cost a living increase, you're replacing a year from five years ago. So his pension's going up, but he's contributing six percent of his pay on it for his benefit, really the percentage benefit to not increase anymore.
Okay, so he's putting an extra six percent in that he's not gonna realize.
He won't, he'll realize a small portion of it through the salary changes, but not really through.
So he's really gonna have to stop now, otherwise it's just gonna keep compounding.
Yeah.
What do you mean through the salary changes?
So if somebody makes a hundred thousand dollars and they get two percent raise each year.
Yeah.
It goes to one oh two, we'll round down and go one oh four, one oh six, one oh eight, one ten, right?
Right.
So that one ten year is gonna replace a hundred year.
Right.
So it just that average rolls.
Yeah, right.
So there is a small benefit to staying past it because salaries typically increase every year. And you're taking your newest year and replacing a year from five years ago.
Right, you can continue to work just like social security.
Yeah.
You get a lifetime calculation, they give you some money for it once a year. I'm in that situation.
Yeah.
Um, now for him though, uh, do we technically owe him any money back on the six percent or not?
No, because the MOUs were clear and said thirty-five years of contributions. Contribution started in two thousand and one. So this is an amendment pretty much to the MOUs to say it stops at thirty-seven.
So we have no legal obligation.
Correct.
We reimburse him any of that six percent he would withhold. He's just doing it, but it's not gonna really help him much. Except for the lifetime calculation.
On a pro forma basis, so how many are encroaching that, that time? Um, we had, there used to be two that were over thirty-five years, him and I mean Earl. She's since retired.
Right.
Um, I should have brought my laptop. I think Laura of the SEALs probably next closest.
But, but there, but there are two or three eminently that would be affected.
Yeah, I, I think it, maybe it's one person that. And I think last I looked, she's probably at like thirty-three years. So it'd still be another four years.
A quarter. Down the runway.
Yeah. So, and then obviously, anybody hired since two thousand and one has been making contributions all along. And that's kind of where the next bucket of people kind of fall. You know? So.
So he's been already notified that the six percent will stop.
Well.
No, he has not been notified.
Because technically, the town doesn't have to do anything for it.
It's just we're, we're aligning the policy with what we're doing with the unions to the non-union. This really isn't fair. I mean, to have them to keep contributing at that rate.
But he should be notified.
Once, once the board of selectmen makes a decision.
Yeah.
Until we make a decision, well, until you make a decision, make your recommendation. Right, we, we can certainly do it, but I think it's very important to go through this.
Okay.
Mission, which is why it's before you today.
Yeah. Okay, so, so really, we're an advisory board that is gonna advise you on what we think. And then you take it and take it up with the town attorney, of course.
Exactly.
And go from there, and then he'll be notified at some point.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, and this is different than the town negotiates contracts, which affects the pension. But it's part of a contract negotiation. This as one-off, I think, is one of the reasons too that Dan felt it should really at least come in front of insurance and pension.
Cause it'll be, it'll be a non, it'll be a policy for the non-union point. Going forward, to your point, we've got one on the horizon about four years off. But it will be a policy, so that's why this, I think it's important to look at and consider it. It gives validity to what we do.
Yeah, sure.
No, I think I've got a handle on what's happening.
Yeah, and really, the main effect it's gonna have is he contributes probably eight to nine thousand dollars. It wouldn't be nine. It's probably seven, eight thousand dollars a year towards the pension now it stopped. So now, instead of coming from his pocket, it'd have to come as part of the actuary determined contribution, you know? Um, so, but he's really not, to what we talked, he's not really reaping any real benefit from it.
No.
You know?
No, and there's no callback provision or anything like that where we have to give them those two years of six percent back. Or I would give it back to them as if it didn't happen.
Correct, yeah, cause like, like the board of selectmen don't technically have to do anything. So if they make a decision, it would affect anybody thirty-seven and above that it would stop at that point.
Okay, but he's not negatively affected.
Well.
Not really, I mean, he's just not earning. He's making the money.
Yeah, realistically, once you get past thirty-five years, you're working for twenty-four cents on the dollar. Cause your pension would be seventy percent and you're contributing six, so, you know.
Yeah, it's like social security, you know, you're collecting it, but you're also paying up to eighty-five percent in tax on it. And there is a, a calculation every year of lifetime when you're still putting in. Uh, this is a little different than that though.
Yeah, but he's not losing money.
Uh.
No. It depends on how you see it, but I understand your point of.
He's not earning, but he's not losing.
He's not earning as much as he's putting in each year, that's for sure.
So. So in a sense, he's, he's putting that six percent in, but it's, he's not gonna really get that full six percent out at this point. He would have up to thirty-five, but once he reached that one beyond that.
Yeah.
So it really behooves him, there's no reason for him to continue that. So, you know, what's we.
Yeah.
I would have, I'd just put it somewhere else.
Yeah.
I mean, he should have the opportunity to put it somewhere else or my own.
Right, well, yeah, he could contribute to another retirement plan or something else.
Yeah.
How old is he?
Um, I don't know. It's a public meeting, so we probably can't say. I did know off the top of my head, but. You know?
Well, coming out of a, a, you know, a retirement plan, uh, April first following year, you turn seventy-three and a half is when you have to start taking that into your distributions. And once you're still in a pension plan, you're actually gonna be doing it, then you can go on that. Yeah, that's the IRS route.
Yeah, I think he's closer to me than you.
Okay. That's the reason why.
Yeah.
The rules of the brain.
Yeah.
Things, I'm not, I'm not rolling.
Yeah.
Kind of memorize these things.
Yeah, I think he started with the town at like eighteen.
So, okay, wow. Um, okay, um, I think I have to open it up to the, to the board here of any feedback, any opinions, any, any thoughts on what we should be doing.
I, I think knowing the situation when I was still working here, uh, and the other people that were in that, I think we should make the recommendation to the board of selectmen to follow through on, you know, uh, the resolution that they proposed to us.
I agree with that.
And I agree too. I think we should do that. Okay, why don't we make a motion then?
I make a motion, motion to, um, approve the board of selection, uh, resolution as proposed by first selectman, um, Dan Carter.
And do I have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Go ahead.
We have James now. James, did you vote aye to that or?
Ayes.
I did, yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, okay, so it's unanimous.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good. Um, okay, I think our next thing is performance review. And Mike, you're on.
Yeah.
If you want to know our performance.
Been, uh, been quite a year. Um, you might remember at our last meeting or pretty much consensus was from, you know, the street, whether it be Mike Wilson, you know, our chief strategist or Goldman Sachs, or even Jamie Dimon at JP Morgan. Uh, you know, pretty much consensus was, was we were heading into a recession, um, that the, uh, we had further downside. Um, you know, inflation, which has, uh, it's not like it's cured, but, uh, four percent is a lot better than eleven. And, you know, the, the, all the, you know, uh, unprecedented speed and volume of the rate hikes. And so, you know, this year, you might remember, looked really good for fixed income. Um, you know, the bond market and, and boy, um, has everyone been wrong. Um, because stocks have just been on, uh, a total tier. And we can focus on the S and P five hundred. Um, the thing worth pointing out, which is on, you know, comes up on the financial channels significantly now is, you know, the big seven. So really, all of the gains of the S and P five hundred has kind of come from seven mega cap technology stocks. And with the S and P now twenty times forward earnings, now that, in the last few weeks, the gains have started to broaden out. So we've seen an uptick. And that's a good, healthy sign. Um, but, you know, the, the, um, the year is kind of shaping up as if, uh, perhaps Jerome Powell has pulled off, uh, the miracle that nobody thought he'd be able to do, which is a soft landing. Um, perhaps we're not gonna go into some, uh, crazy recession. The consumer, um, and companies are, are, their balance sheets are really strong. Um, as we continue to dig out from all of the outcomes of COVID. Right, so the supply chain, what's going on in real estate, inflation, um, labor, right? I mean, um, my son is sixteen, he's got a couple of friends working at the local ice cream shop. And they're making twenty-one dollars an hour with tips, so minimum wage and, you know, I go to Jersey Mike's after football and I, and I, I guess I've gotten used to my sub being twenty dollars now. Um, and, and again, I think, I think it's gonna take a decade to come, to, to kind of smooth all of the repercussions, um, you know, that COVID has caused. So, so with the S and P five hundred, you may be surprised to, to hear the, uh, Mexico's up thirty-eight percent year-to-date. Germany's up, uh, the EFA, all of those European countries that are very close to that war are up greater than the S and P five hundred. And there's been just a really robust, um, you know, because what we were really worried about was earnings. And if you follow the earnings that have come out so far this quarter, holy cow, uh, we were, we were expecting all these companies to disappoint in lower guidance. And as they come in, including my own company, um, your earnings are significantly higher than whatever that the street was expecting and guidance is being raised. So, um, we were sort of thinking that the slowdown in, on the good side of the economy, and that is happening. So, you know, the Home Depots and the lows, the good side, but we're seeing the absolute boom, boom in services. So restaurants and, and, and travel and hotels, uh, and, you know, companies within that sector, um, you know, the, the rail wave looks really fantastic. Um, you know, the, so that, that stocks, bonds, different story, right? So why do we, we so optimistic about the bond market? Well, we thought there was some type of slowdown coming. Will that be good for bonds? A slowdown would lead to recession. That would be good for bonds. A recession would lead to rate cuts. Rate cuts aren't gonna happen this year, I promise you that. And any type of rate cut would be, uh, very beneficial to the bond market. So when we get into the performance of the bonds, it's been respectable. Uh, but you'll see that the stocks have really, you know, carried the ball for our performance. So, you know, I brought, uh, just, I'm not gonna go through it, but on page four of the executive summary, uh, Morgan Stanley's view, uh, is that still that this is a bear market rally. Morgan Stanley's view is that twenty times forward PE is not cheap. Uh, Morgan Stanley's view is that there's a lot of kind of negative things that could be coming down the road. Um, you know, including a recession. So, you know, uh, Mike Wilson on our monthly CIO call goes through, you know, page after page after page that indicates that uh, some type of correction is coming and, and every day the market goes up. Um, that's why we diversify. And if you have stocks, right, you better have ten or near, years or more time horizon. Um, you know, anyone that, you know, typically you don't see it in public pensions or even pension plans, right? Committees have a, are sort of forced to have that long-term view. But, uh, you know, the retail guy at the end of twenty-two that sold everything at his fourth gate land, I mean, that, how do you think he feels right now, uh, missing, you know, which, uh, this incredible run in international stocks in, uh, you know, alternative investments, which have done really well for us. We will touch on that. So, um, turning the page, I'll get to some good news on page seven. Uh, all the losses, quote unquote, losses, uh, are now gains from two thousand and twenty-two. If you look on the far right of page seven, I brought our three-year annualized return of seven point one nine. Uh, so the portfolio on the town pension has made seven point three million. Um, over the last three years, it's paying out two million more than it's taken in, but let me remind everybody, that's how it's supposed to work with the popular group. Uh, and in fact, that trend will continue. You will see more and more as the retirees and life expectancy, um, you will see that play out. And it's, that's how it's supposed to look. Um, and that will continue to grind. Uh, better news, you guys are probably aware, we have a six-thirty plan year-end. And so that the, uh, rate of return that's gonna be used for this year's actuarial calculation is gonna be nine point six nine percent. That's what we did from June to June, second half of twenty-two, first half of twenty-three. Let me remind you, before we get all excited about that number, the smoothing and that when we're, you know, last year, when it was negative, it wasn't that negative and, um, but, uh, it is what it is, and the smoothing obviously has lots of positive benefits.
I think our actuary is what, seven point two now?
No, six something.
Six and a quarter.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think it's below six five.
Six and four.
Oh, you dropped it lower?
Yeah.
Okay, did you drop it?
I think.
A quarter.
I didn't drop it.
No.
This fourth.
The fourth.
Yeah, um, it's either six and a quarter or six and an eighth. I think we were talking about going to six and eight at one point. Didn't two years ago, cause our return was like twenty something. Last year was what? I think six thirty was like minus fourteen or something. Um.
That's the equities, but go ahead.
So, but I, I think we're.
Negative nine.
Yeah, so I think we're, we're in the below six point five or six point five range.
Yep.
I have it up there.
And we're going in the right direction.
So year-to-date, right, let's take a mathematician. Uh, right now, we're annualizing, you know, a little over thirteen percent halfway through the year, being up six point eight seven. Now, turning to page, on page eight, you can see the asset allocation uh, that have been adopted and we can stick into it, ten percent in alts, uh, alternative investments, forty percent fixed income, forty-eight percent equities. You can see down below, we have a very broad diversified, you know, we have, uh, growth and value. We have international and domestic. We have large, mid, and small. And, uh, you know, a true diversified strategy using uh, the managers within the global investment committee that meets our fiduciary uh, approval. Uh, if a manager underperforms, um, they are, they are terminated and a replacement manager is brought in. So, uh, you can see there, the total plan assets right now on the employee side is, uh, just under thirty-eight million dollars. And the asset allocation, uh, as sleeves go up and down because of performance, whether it be good or bad or contributions, the, 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 each of those investment sleeves are trimmed and reallocated on a monthly basis.
If I can ask on the cash value on there to five hundred and sixteen, that's usually enough for about a six-month payout.
Yeah, so we, uh, manage that with Brad. Brad does a great job of sending in the contributions and aligning that with the liquidity in the portfolio to make sure that we, uh.
Have adequate.
Yeah, we are doing a monthly dollar-cost averaging out strategy because the money comes in significantly less now than the money that goes out. So we're gonna, we have a monthly hundred twenty thousand dollar liquidity draw. That with, in contribution with the, with the contributions covers everything.
Okay.
Page ten, see, if we were all stocks, uh, year-to-date, we're up thirteen point five five. Uh, last year, stocks lost fourteen. Brad, that might be the number that you quoted.
Right.
Uh, bonds are not doing what we thought they would do, right? So we, you might remember in previous meetings, uh, Morgan Stanley with, um, you know, last year, our bond portfolio was down three. But let's be crystal clear, the bond aggregate last year was down twelve percent. So we saw losses in fixed income that no one has seen before in their lifetime, and even Ed.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Even you, Ed. I, I go back to managing, like to the seventies, and I can tell you. And seventy-nine, eighty was pretty crazy, okay? But, uh.
Well, when you, when you have the Fed go from zero to five in seven months, you know, there's a, there's a correlation, an inverse correlation between interest rates and bond prices. And when they go from zero to five in seven months, um, it was very humbling to see, and you, this is the phone call that I get all the time now. Hey, why don't we just put it in treasuries? Treasuries are paying five. Treasuries aren't paying five. Treasury, you get five because treasury prices are so low that you're, you're going into the treasury market, right? So, um, you know, the, 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 again, the COVID, it's gonna take a decade for, for, for financial stability to sort of get back to where we were. And it has started to happen. Why the bond market hasn't done as well as we thought in the first six months is simply because stocks have been on tier. And, um, you know, it does look like perhaps, uh, you know, we still have labor, um, issues, uh, in, as it relates to inflation, goods inflation has fallen off cliff. Um, so, you know, how much more does the Fed have, right? Some people say done, some people say two more. Uh, there, you've got the, that some people saying significantly more. Uh, Morgan Stanley's view, by the way, is perhaps two more, twenty-five basis points and then done. Uh, we don't see any rate cuts this year. Now we see them into next year. Of course, we, keep in mind, rate cuts would be for a reason. But why would the, why would the Federal Reserve wanna hit the gas pedal on the economy? Right, so they're gonna cut rates cause perhaps things aren't going as well as they were. Um, but still, the, the, and by the way, we, we are overwhelming majority of our fixed income portfolio is still in that. What my clients keep calling me for is how, why don't we just buy treasuries? Uh, is in that five percent treasury market. So very safe, very liquid, very short duration, high liquidity. Um, the sage strategy is a little bit longer, a little bit less in credit quality, but there's not a lot of money in there. And that, you know, that sort of balance, uh, really is powerful within, you know, the public pension market. Um, from a liquidity standpoint, from an investment quality standpoint, from, you know, we, we, so we should see more tailwinds there. By the way, because of all that, instead of being down twelve last year, we're down three.
Mike, on our aging for our, our bonds that we're holding, uh, how did that, how was our age?
Yeah, the average duration is like two, two years and one month.
That's what I wanted to go, yeah. And we're still looking at that. We're not going out long yet.
Nope.
But your people are ready to go on at the right time.
Yep. Yep.
Alternative investments, uh, you can see there, we've got a six percent rate of return. Um, master limited partnerships in real estate. Real estate is a word that spooks people. Just be clear, real estate, we're not talking about, you know, third-class commercial properties and vessel, right? This is a broad, global look at real estate, including residential, which is still red hot, including hospitals and nursing homes and prisons and, you know, uh, you know, real, real estate is a big world word. And it diverse, it's also a great hedge against inflation. Right, but we're not talking about classy properties in waterbury. I mean, it's, it's, it, it's a big, 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 big world. You see there are all, the alternatives have continued to serve us well. Uh, up six percent halfway. It, it's a big, 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 big world, you see there are all, the alternatives have continued to serve us well, uh, up six percent halfway through the year.
Mike, question for you, on some of the commercial real estate, that, um, you know, you, you got your commercial, your, your rental, I'm not talking residential. Um, there's been a lot of talk around about, uh, a lot of vacant office space and buildings, how are they handling and reconciling that?
They're not buying them, yeah, so you, you, you see a very light holding there, because that's a pretty, uh, you know, the blind men see that coming, kind of thing, yeah.
So we don't have a heavy exposure in that area at all?
No, absolutely not. Um, jumping to the police plan, it's the same story, guys, so on page four, you're gonna see, almost page four of the next section, it's the police only plan. Uh, very similar returns, slightly different, because really the big difference of the police plan in the last three years. There's been a million four added to the plan versus two million taken out, uh, last twelve months, seventy-seven, twenty, so. Younger, healthier, longer term, different population, smaller population.
Still active.
Still active.
Right.
But the returns are, because of the flow of deposits and withdrawals, they're always slightly different, but they're always like within, you know. Basis points, the asset allocation to management is the same, um, so, I think we can kind of end there, everything I talked about in the first group rolls to the second. Uh, last is the low SAP plan, right, length of service plan for the fireman, same asset allocation, much smaller count, right? Total value six hundred thirty-four thousand, so we're using mutual funds there, not institutionally managed stuff. Uh, but same asset allocation, same management style, same reallocation.
And that's a frozen plan too, I mean, no, there's no new people going in it.
Correct.
Like the town, that's a frozen plan, but the police of course are an open point.
Correct.
And there's no future of changing that at all, that I can see.
No, the police just signed a new contract last year, so, and, and that contract runs through the end of twenty-two, thirty, twenty-five, I think. And all new hires get it, there's nothing in there for new hires after that yet, and it still has to be negotiated.
Right, and there's no thing on, on one K plan or anything like that, but that, it's just a great out pension.
Correct.
And that's more a competitive situation, too.
Correct.
With other towns.
And, um, on the town side, the employee contributes six percent of the pay for two percent a year, the police plan is seven and a half percent. But they get two and a half percent of their pay for the first twenty, and then it drops to two percent for the next ten. Um, but that's one of the reasons that their contributions are higher, they're paying seven and a half percent instead of six.
And they can get the money, what, after twenty years?
There's, a normal retirement is twenty-five, there's some earlys, if you are hired later, if you're over fifty-five and have ten years in, it's only ten years. Um, most of the new hires are.
Twenty-five.
Yeah.
So, you, you know, in conclusion, uh, the view of the rest of, of, of this year is that it looks like the, the, the rally should continue as long as the earnings are there, and, and. You know, the, uh, the earnings quality of all the companies within the S and P have surprised everyone. The outlook for bonds looks really good still, even though it's, maybe we don't do the ten percent on the aggregate that Morgan Stanley on January one was looking at. But, but I would be shocked if, if, you know, again, the biggest sort of, um, head, headwind for fixed income is rate hikes. And, you know, if we have two more rate hikes at twenty-five basis points, that's gonna be pretty irrelevant. Uh, you know, in the grand scheme of things, and then, you know, the opportunity, you know, the bond market dwarfs the stock market. And whether it's pension plans, insurance companies, banks, right, you saw the SVB blow up. Um, you know, the global demand for high-quality fixed income i- 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 is colossal, why, why does China own our treasuries? Not because they like us, because the treasury is the safest, most liquid asset in the world. Um, so I would, I'm pretty comfortable with our existing allocation now, and, uh, you know, we'll, we'll see where we are at the next quarterly meeting.
Yeah, and I don't see at this point any changes in our, in our, you know, investment plan or investment, uh. Um, policy statements or anything like that, or our assessment, I think we've got a pretty good one right now, uh, you know, going forward. And just to put things in perspective, uh, at the top of the, or the trough of the market, when it went down, and NASDAQ was down about thirty-three percent, now it's down only eleven, as of today. Uh, the, uh, S and P five hundred was down twenty-five, now it's down about, uh, four point four.
The all-time high.
Yeah, from the all-time high, and the, um, Dow got down to twenty percent, now it's down about four point nine to five as of today. So this rally has been really tremendous.
Yeah, and, and at the all-time high, uh, January first of, seven thirty first of twenty twenty-one.
Correct.
Trailing ten, the S and P five hundred, nineteen point two, money double every four point two years. Compare that to the last decade, two thousand to two thousand and ten, the S and P five hundred annualized negative half percent. So if you've been funding this pension plan for the last twenty-five years, trick question, where was the money made? When he was made the last decade with those contributions? Right, I mean, that, that's where money was made, felt good, you know, in that following ten years, but where was the money, but where? We all look back at, oh, wait, what's the one thing we wish we did more of, buy anything, buy a house, buy a car, buy a stock, buy a bond.
Yeah.
Right, we're gonna look back at twenty-two and go, uh, I wish, I wish. And so, you know, the nice thing about pensions, and again, with committees, is, is you, you guys are really, we're all looking at the long view.
Right.
And which, which, over the long haul, we win every time.
Um, putting this my perspective, uh, where are we on coverage right now, the police and the town, and over.
Oh, still, you're going back to the last meeting there.
Right.
Brad, to help me out here, I mean.
They're both in the high, I think the police was lower, and I think that was high seventies, low eighties, and then the town's like into high eighties.
But Ed, you remember when it was in the forties?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, no, we've come on. Yeah, you know, when you look at the fall, a few years ago, our town, we were very lucky. Uh, you take, like, Camden, Connecticut.
For the next meeting, that's what we're making. She should come down.
Yeah. Well, it'll be in November, we always push it out, sorry, but yeah, we're in a good spot.
Oh, really?
Uh, I forgot what I was gonna say, but yeah, if you remember too, the police used to be higher than the town side.
Right.
But then, there were some bad assumptions in there, pretty much.
Life expectancy.
It was life expectancy, but the other thing that didn't factor is the police typically leave once they hit their retirement age.
Right.
And the town side weren't, so once they adjusted to what the track history had been for the town. The town side went way up, and the police went down a little bit, they're also using old mortality data. So that dropped everything a little bit, because they were using like a twenty-year-old mortality.
Well, when we went to our new actuarial, a lot of that changed. Now our contribution to the town, you know, what you're putting aside.
Yeah.
Um, has that been going up?
That way, I think, I went up like, I think, one, one up like thirty grand, one like that, I mean, they're pretty flat, just good.
And the contract's coming up on our liability insurance, that's a separate issue from this, uh.
So our liability, we, uh, we had, I think, a three-year agreement with Kerma on lap. Um, last went up one and a half percent, they were talking about three percent, and then they lowered it to one and a half, and comp is lower. Comp the last three or four years, they keep coming in at lower rates, because knock on wood, we've had good experiences.
Yeah.
And our lap experience hasn't been bad either, just.
Our injury ratios, yeah, we've been keeping it that way, we're training and everything.
Yeah.
You know, there's a pool, not that big.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, anyone have any comments or any input, uh, further on, uh, on the performance of the pensions where we're at right now?
I am.
Okay, um, Mike, thank you very much, um, at this point, uh, we're, we're done here, so I'm gonna ask, uh. Or an adjournment, um, who have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, are any opposed? Yeah, thank you.